Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Florence Cookie Bailey, Pastor of Christ Temple Deliverance Church of Ensley. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Council Pro Tem Warden Alexander. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning and let us pray. Father, we thank you for our gathering here on today. We pray, Father, that as we gather to pull together our thoughts, our ideas, and our agenda, we pray, God, that it aligns with yours, Father. We pray for every council member as well as our mayor. We pray that you will guide and order our footsteps. So, Father, as we make decisions that would directly affect the citizens of our great city, as we end this prayer, we say, "Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever." Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Morning. Councilmember Smithman. Morning. Councilmember Tate. Okay. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember, good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Morning. Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, the minutes are not ready for the April 1st, 2025 through July 15th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Chief Sparks.
Morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madam Pro Tem. Good morning to the members of the council and members of the public. It's my pleasure to bring brief greetings on behalf of Mayor Woodfin. First up, the Climate Action Plan Public Meeting. The next public meeting for the Central Alabama Climate Action Plan is this Thursday, July 24th. The community is invited to give input on the draft actions and strategies for what will be a roadmap to lower pollution, reduce carbon footprints, and increase the quality of life for all residents within the seven-county Birmingham metropolitan area. The workshop is at 5:30 PM at the Ruffner Mountain Nature Preserve, which is located at 1214 81st Street South. We're asking everybody to RSVP at centralalabamaclimat.com. The Land Bank is about to host their housing expo. The Birmingham Land Bank Authority will host the 2025 Building Birmingham Expo on Friday, July 25th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Bill Harris Arena, which is located at 2337 Bestmore Road. This free event is open to the public and offers an opportunity for prospective homebuyers to, first, connect with builders, lenders, and realtors; second, receive onsite mortgage prequalifications; third, view new construction homes and floor plans; fourth, attend homebuyer education sessions; and fifth, enjoy live presentations and more. For more information, call 205-581-3170 or email landbank@birminghamal.com. Mr. President, Madam Pro Tem, councilmembers, public, Food Truck Friday is on its way back. The community is invited to the city's Food Truck Friday event on July 25th. Come and enjoy lunch from your favorite food trucks from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM in front of City Hall on Shore 20th. The Smithfield Art Walk this Saturday, July 26th. The city of Birmingham, in partnership with local artists, cultural stewards, and community stakeholders, will unveil the Smithfield Public Art Walk, a vibrant, walkable, outdoor gallery celebrating the neighborhood's past, present, and future. Spanning key corridors in Smithfield, the art walk will feature large-scale murals, storytelling installations, sidewalk poetry, and augmented reality experiences that immerse visitors in the spirit and stories of this historic community. The event takes place from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM and is open to the public at no cost. The walk starts near 5th Street North and the Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. For more info, go to createbirmingham.org. Couple of more notes, Mr. President. The city of Birmingham invites the community to our Tools for Schools event presented by Window World. This is a back-to-school event. This is a free, family-friendly, back-to-school celebration to get our students geared up and excited for the year ahead. The event will take place at Lynn Park on Sunday, August 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. There will be a school supply giveaway for students and teachers while supplies last. There'll be games and inflatables, food trucks, music, and fun. Whether you're a student, parent, teacher, or just a proud supporter of Birmingham's youth, this is definitely an event you don't want to miss. And the city of Birmingham is hosting a vendor expo. The city of Birmingham's Department of Finance invites small business owners, entrepreneurs, service providers, and vendors of all sizes to attend the Business with B-Ham Vendor Opportunity Expo, a free in-person event designed to help local businesses navigate and access procurement opportunities with the city of Birmingham. The event will take place Thursday, August 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Battlewood Auditorium and will serve as a comprehensive guide for doing business with the city. Whether you're a startup, a seasoned supplier, or a mom-and-pop operation, this expo will provide step-by-step guidance on Birmingham's bidding process. Attendees will meet directly with members of the city's purchasing team, learn how to become a certified vendor, receive help obtaining a business license, and discover a wealth of citywide resources to support their growth. Pre-registration is definitely required, so we ask that you call 205-254-2265, or you can email purchasing@birminghamal.gov. Mr. President, that concludes the mayor's report.
All right, thank you, Chief Sparks. Council, without objection, will suspend the rules for a brief presentation from Mr. Darius Peace, who's going to be talking to us again about the Magic City Black Expo.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning. President Darrell O'Quinn, good morning. Chief of Staff Cedric Sparks, on behalf of the mayor, good morning, all the rest of the council. I am Darius Peace, and I do want to make one correction. The name of the event is the Magic City Expo. It's going to be taking place on August 9th, 2025, at the BJCC South Hall, and it's an event that is created to connect the citizens of greater Birmingham with the businesses that we believe bring magic into the city. I want to give a special thanks to President Darrell O'Quinn, as well as Counselor JT Moore for their support as being sponsors of the event, and I'm also inviting every one of the counselors to participate as sponsors for the event, as well as the mayor's office, as we do have vendors and attendees from every area in the city represented. So that would be fantastic. But again, I'm inviting everybody to come out. It's really a fantastic event. It's a relaunching event that brought a lot of success and a lot of great press to the city of Birmingham. It's been featured in Uptown Professional Magazine, Black Enterprise Magazine, Essence Magazine, and Money Magazine. So I'm really excited about that. So I invite you all to come out. You can learn more about the event at magiccityexpo.com. That's magiccityexpo.com, and I look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you. All right. Yes. Councilmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to acknowledge some students from the Hopewell AME Church in Kingston, who are here with Ms. Beverly Graham and Ms. Yvette Cons, who just came to learn more about our democratic process and how we handle business here at the city. And so I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged them in the crowd today. If y'all could, just stand over there. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. Awesome. Okay. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Ms. Clark, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda today starts on page two with items two and three. Skip over page three. We have item number four on consent. Go to page 30. We have items five, six, and seven on consent. Page 31, items eight, nine, and 10 are on consent. Page 32, items 11, 12, 13, and 14 are on consent. Page 33, items 15 and 16 are on consent. Page 34, items 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 are on consent. That concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove items from the consent agenda? Counselor Abbott.
Excuse me, yes, I would like to add, I mean, to remove item 14 on page 32 and item 15 on page 33, and also page six, I mean, item 16 on page 34.
Okay. 14, 15, and 16.
Page 32 and 33.
Okay. Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to withdraw item one. The applicant surrendered a business license.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Smithman.
I would like to take item three off of consent.
Item three?
Yes.
Okay. Any other counselors? Okay. We do have one item on the consent agenda that is a public hearing. That is item number four. Do any members of the public wish to remove item four from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for our motion on the consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Ms. Clark.
One second, please. All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. I believe our first item is number three.
Yes, item one has been withdrawn, and first item is item three. A resolution granting operating authority permit with one certificate of public necessity and convenience to the Pull-up B-Ham LLC 1225 18th Place Southwest Birmingham, Alabama 35211, to be used in the operation of a limousine, pre-arranged, transported upon public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, as amended or may be amended.
All right, move the item.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Smithman.
Yes, I had a couple of neighborhood people who had questions about this, just because this is in West End. Some of the questions they had, what does this involve at the fiscal address? Is this the LLC owner's fiscal address? Will there be limousines parked or stored on 18th Place? And just in just basic terms, what is being granted? I don't know if anybody can answer that. No.
Well, usually the business owner would have to answer that question. I don't see that person here.
Okay.
Yeah, this can't answer the specific questions about, you know, where the vehicles will be stored, but the business owner did appear before the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and, you know, what they're doing is a quote "party bus." So it's like a 15-passenger cutaway-style vehicle, you know, that they will be using to transport people who are having weddings and other things, you know.
So it's just one bus that's being operated?
If I, I'd have to look back to the certificate of public necessity, but I believe it's just one currently. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering, since this is a residential address, why would a business being used, a residential address? Shouldn't the business address where the limousine or party bus is being kept be their location rather than a residence?
I can get Attorney Bernard to also provide follow-up.
Okay.
We might need a delay.
Yeah, let's at least table it. So motion to table.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
All right, so item three is tabled. Believe the next item is item 14.
One second, please, let me table three. All right, item three, I'm sorry, item 14. Item 14.
You can read 14, 15, and 16 together. They're all.
Okay, we'll hear them all at the same time.
They're all related.
All right, item 14. A resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, 3905 Airport Highway, Birmingham, in the amount of $4,7663 for the ENG 2025-13 Resurfacing Citywide Contract, one, located in Birmingham, Alabama, this being the lowest responsible responsibility bid submitted, authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, substantially deformed, contained within the bid documents, and in accordance with said bid, provided that the total compensation payable under the contract does not exceed the appropriation. Item 15, a resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, 3905 Airport Highway, Birmingham, in the amount of $4,461,496.60 for ENG 2025-14 Resurfacing Citywide Contract, number two, located in Birmingham, Alabama, this being the lowest and responsible, a responsible bid submitted, authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, substantially deformed, contained within the bid documents, and in accordance with said bid, provided that the total compensation payable under the contract does not exceed the appropriation. And item 16, a resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, 3905 Airport Highway, Birmingham, in the amount of $4,260,512.85 for ENG 2015-15 Resurfacing Citywide Contract, three, located in Birmingham, Alabama, this being the lowest responsible and responsible bid submitted, authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, substantially deformed, contained within the bid documents, and in accordance with said bid, provided that the total compensation payable under the contract does not exceed the appropriation.
Remove approval.
Okay. Just motion to second, Abbott and Moore. Counselor Abbott.
Well, I wanted first to make sure that the public knew that we were going to pave some more streets, and I'm not even running for office. So, but the biggest thing to me is, I wanted to understand why we have contracts one, two, and three. Usually we have, like, do things by the quadrants of the city, and this is not quadrants, this is whatever it is.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Counselor Abbott, to your question, if you look in the attachments, it's broken out into different districts. So Dunn will actually pavement certain districts in certain segments would give us, gives us different pricing. So instead of doing one big master agreement for just citywide pavement, we did it in different segments to get a better rate of return on our funding that we have for paving.
Okay. Good. Now, the next thing is the street markings, striping, paving. That still isn't happening in a timely fashion. So have y'all put anything in these contracts to what, that would make them put the traffic bars, the crosswalks, the parking striping, and all of the things that are needed for people to drive safely?
So our team, Counselor Abbott, is working, as we've said in a couple of the other meetings, it's really a limited number of companies that are providing that type of support, but our BDAT team is leaning, is leaning in to, one, drive that result a little bit more aggressive, as we also level up internally too. So to your question, when you say expedited, that's a little bit of a challenge just because of the resources available to do it, but our BDAT team is working with the companies to make sure we expedite it as fast as possible.
Okay. Well, this is a, this is a public safety issue. People are not stopping at stop signs anymore because there's no street markings to remind them that there's a stop sign there. This is a dan, this is dangerous. So it's not just that I like to see white stripes on nice new black streets, it's that it's a danger, and especially with all the new stop signs that we're putting up all over the city. If you don't have a traffic bar, and you don't have crosswalks, and you don't have anything paved, painted on the pavement, people just whiz on through. So I've, I've seen it happen a large number of times, so that's the reason I'm asking. And the last thing is, have we done anything about the obliteration of our curbs? The people who are doing the paving are paving up to the top of the curb. If you do that, you no longer have a curb. And we are doing that certainly on the south side, I don't know about other people's districts, but there's a purpose for a curb. And if you don't have them anymore, then all your rights of way wash away when it rains and turn into large mud holes. And I can certainly send you some photos of where that has happened, but we need to make sure we're not continuing to do it because we've just finished doing it. Again, Ramsey High School's a good example. The streets around Ramsey, the curbs and the paving are the same height. So when the water comes rushing down the street from those gigantic rainstorms, well, you know what happens. So have we done anything to our specs that require them to actually grade, grind up the pavement and make sure they're not obliterating our curbs?
So we'll provide you with a detailed update on what BDAT is doing with regards to that, counsel. Look forward to that update.
Because once we do it, we don't come back and fix it. I've never seen us ever come back and fix it. And, and so for the next 10 years until the next paving, you're stuck with a mess. So I would like to hear about that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll provide that.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Pro Tem Alexander.
Yes, thank you very much. I do echo Counselor Abbott's questions regarding this. I know in our packet, we do have pavement marking specifications, so the specifications are there. What I would like to ask, do we have any timeframe that they should come back and make those, be sure those specifications are made? And is there any inspection done by BDAT or services, offices within the city to ensure that these specifications have been met? Because I have to say as well, when we look at the, how far up the paving goes to the curb, even to ditches and storm drains, sometimes in District 7, we have some that are completely covered, and then we have residents that have flooding that occurs, and it's over a period of time. So I would like to also see, even though we have these specifications included in our contract or specified in our contract, is there a timeframe when those markings should be made and how we go back and quality control that? Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to just pile on here on the curb issue. That's in the recent, in the current round of paving, I've had some residents reach out to me and say that there wasn't sufficient milling of the existing paving done, so now the pavement is at the top of the curb and all of the stormwater is going to be, you know, pushed into their yard. So, and I think there's some, you know, state laws about that, so something to certainly be aware of, but, you know, in places where this is already an existing condition, the milling and repaving is an opportunity to restore that, the, the curbs. So we should certainly, you know, be taking advantage of repaving streets and getting our curbs back where we can.
Mr. President, Madam Pro Tem, Counselor Abbott, so we've asked for James Fowler from our Department of Transportation and Ms. Denise Bell, who's over at Capital Projects, to come in. Ms. Denise will lead the responses to your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Denise Bell, Service Director of Capital Projects.
Good.
Okay, all right. So the first question regarding the specifications, there are specifications in our contract. We have made some changes. It is 21 days after pavement that we expect for the stop bars, et cetera, to, all striping, temporary striping to be in place, and then another 21 days. So in 42 days, you're supposed to see permanent. This go-around, we have actually consulted, outsourced the construction inspection services because the geographical landscape of the city of Birmingham is too big for our small staff to actually be on-site every day that the contractor's on-site. So we've employed services to help us to keep compliance for those areas as well as curbs. So we do plan to see and expect to see a difference this time.
Thank you for that particular answer. I do want to piggyback on Dr. O'Quinn's comment and concern about when we have this opportunity to sort of undo the damage that's already been done. Is that outlined or specified as well when we talk about the millage, is it called millage, of the concrete and the paving? And is there opportunity at that time to sort of undo the damage? When we, is that part of the process?
If we're striped, if we're doing resurfacing, we do try to, if, if work has been done previously, whether it's the actual capital projects, et cetera, we do, we do move to correct issues while we're in the field.
Okay. And I am glad to hear that at least we have a consultant. I understand the wide range of streets that we have and the square footage of what we're trying to pave, but it is comforting to me to know that if you're outsourcing that from a quality control standpoint, that there are another set of eyes after the 42-day period. I guess the only thing that concerns me, we still have streets that have not had that type of pavement or markings done. So is this new to this particular contract, set of contracts?
Right. So this is fiscal year '25. So you're talking about fiscal year '24. So we are addressing those issues right now with the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and another thing is that our paving contractors are paving over our gutters. You know, we have, in many of the older parts of the city, we have the granite curbs, which are about 12 to 15 inches deep. And they used to have concrete sticking out into the street, and now our paving contractors have just paved over all that. So we actually have places where we need correction because we can't wait for five or 10 more years for the next paving cycle for somebody to come and mill it down. The water does not know that we need to wait five or 10 years, and so it's washing everything away. So do we have a corrective plan? Is there anybody in City Hall who is aware of this and is doing anything to correct what has been done incorrectly?
So if the work is actually under our contract, we have what we call a punch list process before we issue final approvals and final checks, we make sure that the work is done. I can't say, I, that we have a shortage of staff from an inspection standpoint. We try to catch everything. We may not, if you know those areas, if you'll get it to the mayor's office, we'll double-check those areas. we'll double check those areas. But hence again, why we outsource some assistance this go-around.
Okay, thank you.
Council Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, I did have a question about, you know, areas that, you know, and this is kind of situation adjacent. In those areas where we are paving roads and we see where the curb possibly needs to be addressed because of ADA needs, I know that there have been roads that have been paved that, you know, individuals who are in wheelchairs, who, you know, need the ramps and need access, it, it needs to be addressed. And so was curious as to whether those things would also be considered when addressing these roads as well.
I apologize. I, I heard the part about ADA, which we-
It feels like when you select streets, ADA consideration.
When we're selecting streets, I don't know that we are considering ADA as part of pavement selection. But when we select a street, we do evaluate the ADA accessibility. So I wouldn't say we're choosing streets based on that, but we do evaluate that when we choose a street, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and I know that you all aren't choosing them based on that. I'm just trying to ensure that, you know, you all are considering that when you are looking at streets. Because I know that there are some in, in throughout District Four that, you know, need some type of access for folks who need that type of support.
So they do the first initial review. And then our team, which ADA administrators housed under Capital Projects, we actually participate in the design. We have our standard ADA requirements, but we do, we're trying to move towards a more inclusive ADA requirements where the, the Compliance Division of Capital Projects actually reviews and provide comments as well.
I want to add one more comment generally, which I think speaks to all of this. So since we are well into a cycle now, year over year, where we are consecutively investing a huge amount of money, I think a historic amount of money in paving, each year we continue to, you know, learn and observe where those gaps are. And so each year, we put in place additional steps and additional steps, which is part of the bringing in that outside inspections consultant. And so each year, you know, even though we do kind of learn things along the way, I think we're building a stronger and stronger machine for keeping up this investment in paving, which has now been sustained across years. So I, I guess I would say it's part of just growing pains of the substantial volume of work that we're doing citywide. But we are, each iterative time, making additional steps and increases to improve the process.
Okay. I got a question. So I'm just doing some math here in my head. And it looks like the total amount between these three different lump sum bids is a little under $13 million. And I believe the budget that was approved was around $15 million. So Chief Mitchell can, are, are there going to be additional paving contracts that come to us for that balance? Or, I mean, the, the budget doesn't say you have to spend-
Correct.
$15 million, but are we going to try and?
So there are other segments that you, you've seen in the past that we collaborated with the county on doing through streets. So of course, some of that money that we're using is coming out of the gas tax. So that goes towards that $15 million allocation for the paving. So, you know, we set aside a little more money just for those particular contracts or those segments that we can collaborate with the county on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
It's also worth noting that a little bit of the money gets set aside for emergency repairs. So, you know, we know we have stormwater failures where that results in big sinkholes. Those will be the city's responsibility to fix. So we set aside a little bit of that money for those repairs as well. And then we sometimes use a little bit of that money, if there's some left over for alleys or just other, guardrail, other street-related fixes as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't see any additional questions coming forward. So, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. That, those three items are approved. And that completes all of the business items on our agenda.
Yeah, tabled item.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So we motioned to retake up, to take up item three.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And now I want to offer a motion for a two-week delay on that item.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so item three is delayed two weeks. And that completes all of our business items. So Council Woods, are you ready for announcements?
No announcements this morning, but did want to thank residents for their patience. I know patience, I know we just approved some roads in several neighborhoods out east that people were long awaiting, so good news.
All right, thank you, Council Woods. Council Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next public safety meeting will be held today at 1:00 PM. And if you have any questions or concern, feel free to call the office at 254-2302. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Council Tate. Council Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Cresson will be meeting this Thursday at 6:00 at the regular meetings place at New Hope Church. That is all I have.
All right, thank you, Council Williams. Pro Tem Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, July 24th, the Industrial Center Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:00 PM at the Mary Door Center. We have a free event going on in District Seven on Thursday. That is the Brenda Brown Bosom Buddies Community Health Forum. It'll be hosted within, at Oxmore Community Center. This is from 5:30 to 6:30. If you give us an hour, we'll give you some power. And this is a community health and wellness forum. We have all sorts of refreshments, door prizes, and vital information on breast cancer, mental health, diabetes, and healthy living and eating. Also, on Thursday at 9:30 AM, there will be the Get Fit While You Sit classes. These classes are free. They're held at the Roosevelt Recreation Center. So come on out. Those exercise sessions are led by Maestro and Lois. There is another one also held at 10:30 AM, both Thursday and Friday of this week. On Saturday, July 26th, Project Hope Well will present its annual back-to-school celebration at 10:00 AM. School supplies, giveaways, games, food, and prizes will be provided. Special thanks to Community First Birmingham Project School. And this is an opportunity to come and get some of those items and just have a little fun before school starts. The, on the same day, July 26th, Oxmore Valley Community Farmer's Market will be held from 8:00 AM to 11, excuse me, from 8:00 AM to noon at the Oxmore Valley Community Center. There's a diverse mini-market of different types of fruits and vegetables that will be there for you all to purchase. On Friday, August 1st, Jefferson County presents the Get Fit While You Sit Senior Training with Legends from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That'll be at the Boutwell Auditorium. This again is another free event that is also given by Commissioner Sheila Tyson. So please reserve your seat by calling 205-325-5567. And then to end it out, on Saturday, August 2nd, the Roosevelt City, East and Westville-Brownsville community will have their second annual Back-to-School Resources Fair. This is another great opportunity for parents to come out and get resources for our children as they go back to school. The District Seven office is also helping to sponsor this event. So this is free school supplies. We'll have lots of food and fun and opportunity to come out again and get ready for school to start. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Council Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a good time at the Respect Rally, 30th Respect Rally this past Saturday in Moreland Conqueror St. Church. We had all the Birmingham City Schools fans. I think Alcorn State Band also helped out, so it was really good. We had a table and a tent for school supplies. And we just had a really good time. And then we had our Brenda Brown Bosom Buddies seminar last Tuesday and was great event at the Arlington House. The next budget and finance meeting will be on Monday, July 28th at 3:30 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. We have quite a few things happening this Saturday. We have the Tousville Day, D6 Start Day. We will be at Washington Elementary School starting at 8:00 AM. We will be beautifying the school grounds and building raised garden beds so students can learn how to grow and care for fresh produce. This project will not only make the school grounds more inviting, but also teach valuable skills to our children. Shout out to Build Up and Shades Mountain Church for helping us out. But please come and join us. Also, we will be having another Start Day with House Proud. This will be that, this Saturday, starting at 9:00, 9:00 AM. At, we'll meet up at the Arlington-West Stand community. So we'll be starting at Hamp Hill Elementary School. We will be beautifying that elementary school as well and then helping District Six residents in Weston with home repairs, landscaping, and beautification. So come help out. We will have food, music, and more. And then the 41st Annual Tousville Day will actually be this Saturday from 12 to 6. I'm excited to partner with the community again. We'll have food, music, fun, 94.9, free ice cream, inflatable, school supplies, everything. So come out and bring your family as we celebrate 41 years of Tousville Day. And I think that is it, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next planning and zoning meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow, July 23rd, is canceled. Tonight, also, the Redmont Neighborhood Association meeting is canceled. There are a lot of cancellations. If you have any concerns or issues, please call 311 or download the My Behem 311 app where you can include your photos and commentary. We're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for real-time updates and additional information on happenings in the city of Birmingham. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for the discussion on paving. I don't want the administration to think that we're not appreciate, appreciative of all the new paving. We just want it to be safe, so. But we're happy. It's happy to, it's good to have smooth streets.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, Council Abbott. Council Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Norwood Neighborhood Association will have their Neighborhood Association meeting tonight at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Harriman Park will also have their Neighborhood Association this Thursday at 4:30 PM at Harriman Park Recreation Center. Community Development Birmingham Critical Repair Program applications will be open September 4th and 5th of this year. The city of Birmingham City Critical Repair Program helps residents to stay safe and secure at home by providing much-needed repairs to households across the city. In order to be eligible, you must first, applicants must occupy the home and provide proof of ownership. Number two, they, the applicants must occupy the home and provide proof of occupancy. They must qualify as low to moderate income and provide proof of income for all household residents. They also must provide last two months of bank statements for all household residents. They will be having an info sessions coming up. So July 31st, which is a Thursday at 3:00 PM, which will be virtual. And then August the 7th at 5:30 PM at Birmingham Crossplex. And then August 14th at 5:30 PM at Fountain Heights Recreation Center. To learn more information, make sure that you go to CriticalRepairBehem.com or call in at 205-581-3117. That concludes my announcement.
All right. Thank you, Council Moore. In District Five, we have Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association tonight at 6:00 PM at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Also, the Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:30 PM at Girls Incorporated at 5130 Eighth Court South. The next Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will take place on Monday, July 28th at 2:00 PM here in the council chambers. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at Kimberly dot Phillips at BirminghamAL.gov. And the most important announcement I have is that the annual District Five Health Fair will take place this Thursday, July 24th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Parker High School. We will be giving away food boxes, adult and baby diapers, infant formula, doing health screenings, we'll have some boxed meals. And if you need a ride, we can arrange that for you. Please contact my office at 205-254-2679. And that's a ride to get there and then a ride to get home. So this is a partnership that we've worked out with Uber Health. Also, just want to thank Commissioner Sheila Tyson for her collaboration in making this event possible and making, in particular, the food boxes possible. So again, that's Thursday, 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Parker High School. And then, as we always encourage people to do, the Eastlake and Pepper Place Farmer's Markets happen every Saturday mornings. And those run through October for Eastlake and December for Pepper Place. So please take advantage of those resources. And that concludes my announcements. So, Mr. Clark, we have several speakers signed up for our public speakers list.
Yes. First name is Jerica Mabry.
All right. As you approach the lectern, please remember to state your name and address. You'll have three minutes and your time will be displayed on the monitors behind us. Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Jerica Miles Mabry. I reside at 3440 32nd Place North, Birmingham, Alabama 35207. All right. So my name is Jerica Miles Mabry, and I speak for myself and the many Collegeville residents who stand with me today. For over a century, our neighborhood has sacrificed for industry. We are a superfund area scarred by pollution from coke and steel companies. Our families have paid the highest price, including the loss of loved ones to pollution-related illnesses. We are not invisible. We are not expendable. Yet for generations, this is exactly how Collegeville has been treated. Not just by industry, but now by our own city. We are not okay. This is not just a stain on Collegeville, it is a stain on Birmingham. When we allow one neighborhood to be sacrificed for profit and neglect, you set a precedence that threatens the dignity and future of every neighborhood in this city. As leaders, you promise to serve all of us. Every resident of Birmingham should wonder, if this can happen in Collegeville, who will be next? Despite these hardships, the city has refused to invest in our recovery. Instead, you rezone parts of Collegeville, Harriman Park, and Fairmont as light industrial without transparency, without notice, and against our will. Now polluting businesses tear up our roads, poison our air, drive down our property values, and push us closer to losing both our homes and our generational wealth. We see the pattern. After taking our health and our loved ones, the city now pressures us to sell our land and abandon our chance at building generational wealth so that profit and industry can take precedence over people. We are being forced from our homes for pennies. It is not just neglect, it is a calculated strategy to erase us. We see clearly what is happening. The city is making conditions so unbearable that residents are pressured to leave, forced to sell their homes for pennies so that industry and profit can take priority over people. Our councilman knows our pain. He has visited our homes and heard firsthand how we are being forced to live. The injustice is egregious. Not a single dollar of ARPA funding was allocated to our nearly 3,000 residents. Yet Pine knows with only 300 received 400,000. How do you justify this? Let's not forget, Mayor Woodfin ran for office promising, as reported by AL.com in 2017, not another dime downtown until we invest in our 99 neighborhoods. For Collegeville, these words have proven empty. We have seen no investment, no restoration, and no respect. We do not pay taxes to be treated as expendable. We deserve transparency, safety, and a voice in our future. Today, we demand a true community-driven revitalization plan with residents at the table. No more decisions behind, behind closed doors. We invite the mayor and the council to walk our streets, meet our families, and witness firsthand that we, what we live with every day. We are not alone. We bring the voices of neighbors and friends demanding change with us. This is a moral crisis and a breach of trust. Restore Collegeville, remove polluting businesses, invest in our recovery. Remember who puts you in office. We are united, we are watching, and we will not forget who stood with us when it mattered most. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Cynthia Turner. Cynthia Turner?
Oh, Cynthia Turner.
Charlie Powell? Charlie Powell?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Charlie Powell. I reside at 1406 Fourth Avenue North. I own property all in the Fairmont and the East Lake area, and I'm here today to speak about the three communities once I was born, raised, and lived in, that's Fairmont, Collegeville, and Harriman Park. It's really disgusting. From 2012, I've been coming down here. I didn't come down here maybe about a year and a half because I've had hip surgery, back surgery, 28 pounds of fluid pump off me, and I lost eight members to counsel from that closed-down, defunct plant now that's not going to open back up. And I hear a lot of the talk of what y'all been doing in the communities, that they're nice, but y'all ain't did nothing for down there, not nothing. The roads, and I can tell you when the roads been, been resurfaced in Fairmont, that was 28 years ago, when our president of Fairmont ran for president then. And since the closing of the plant, it done got worse. They done classified it as a class E. They rezoned it with all those peoples living there. But now, what make any one of y'all that think they want to live out there with warehouses? Well, it was told that, that plant would never open back up, and I assure you, it won't. But what make you think that they want warehouses there? They ain't ware, warehousing ain't in the other communities, and they started coming out there. And if you look at that area out there, you got Norwood, Folsendale, and Gardendale. We in the center of it, five miles from each one of them, and they building up everywhere but out there. North Birmingham ain't North Birmingham anymore. It's nothing. And the peoples out there, are the property there you're dropping down, the insurance don't want to pay when something happened to your house out there, and, this is a bad situation. Now, what Panic had said for, since 2012, to relocate them peoples or buy them out, compensate the ones that still want to stay there, and I stand on that. And now that the plant is closed and not going, never open again, you got 400 acres of contamination, which need to be cleaned. How is you going to clean it with them peoples out there? There's no way you can do it. So I still stand firm on that. Now, what I would like to ask, the last time I was here, about a year and a half, I gave out folders to what Panic was asking for. Never got a response. So what I'm asking for now is a meeting with all of y'all. I know I can't meet with y'all one-on-one, meeting y'all chairman, meeting the city hall, the city jail, or wherever y'all want to meet it, but we need to meet with y'all because this is not right. And I've been screaming this here. Now, these peoples here came up here, now you heard them cry, but I've been saying relocate, buy out all the time, you know, and get them people found out the value for their housing. I read that thing, the city big ask. Well, it was about this thick. Well, I guess they thought I wasn't going to read it. I thought about not reading it. Well, it took me two days because I read five pages at a time. And you know, they asked the, the big ask, they were saying 37 million dollars. When they got through trickling it all down, they was giving these peoples $10,000 for their house.
Mr. Powell?
But that's it.
Yeah. Thank you. Any response or?
One question before I leave, because I know my three minutes up, and I can't stand that long, no way, because I'm still under the doctor. When can I have a meeting with y'all? We come down here and talk with y'all, but that's all. We don't hear nothing in response, so I'm asking for a meeting with the city council. Panic asked for a meeting. When can I get it? You got my address? Write me.
Okay. Got you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Get back in touch with me.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Reverend Dr. Wayne Harris. To the council, to the mayor in his absence, to all the junior pastor of the Tabanakel Fellowship of Birmingham, also a communications lead for Black Lives Matter who is standing with the community on today. Structural racism and urban planning injustice are real. It is the playbook of colonialism. And what we're finding now is that, that playbook is being used by Black folk on Black folk, Black elected officials on Black elected officials. Collegeville deserves better. Pastor, my first church in Collegeville 30 years ago, that is my connection, I've remained close to this community. Candidates are pulling all up to Collegeville, taking pictures, taking photos, doing all of that, but the people of Collegeville cannot testify to good streets and stuff like we've heard here today. I listened to Brother JT Moore be applauded by a young man who I, who I admired as my friend doing the whole Magic City something, and he thanked God for the support, but folk in Collegeville can't thank you for their support. They feel neglected. We've been meeting with them for many months now. Disparity is not mismanagement. We believe this is intentional neglect. It is intentional. Phil, the, the county, the city feels very much, this community feels very much not represented by someone they put in office, JT Moore. They feel unheard. I've been in many meetings where you blatantly lied to them and then come back with the information that you promised. So this community is frustrated.
Reverend Harris, please direct your comments to the council.
Sure. Counsel, we have been in situations where this community has not been spoken the truth to on various occasions. Thank you for that correction. There are three seats that we are concerned about. One is the seat of the city councilman, and the other two are the fact that we have two people who are neighborhood association people who are not here now and promise to be here, and they are not representing this neighborhood at all. Matter of fact, in our last meeting, we find out they've been coming back, taking their own toes of what they want to do, and then representing the community through themselves and not even by vote of these people. You can call the health department, Dr. Hicks, and he will tell you what he has experienced in the last meeting. This is historical. This is urban renewal on the backs of Black people. This is redlining. This is environmental racism. This is neglect, and it is strategic tool. The neighborhood deserves better, and Black Lives Matter, along with Panic, along with other agencies that have joined together, will be here to back them in the process. It does not matter to us who is elected. We will hold all accountable. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our speakers. All right. Before we adjourn the meeting, I want to thank our officers on duty. Again, we have Officer Pinkard and Officer Square, who are based here in City Hall. Thank you for, for being with us this morning. And that concludes our agenda.
Say your thing. Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Appreciate everybody being here. I want to welcome you to the 15th Annual Man Up Breakfast. This was started 15 years ago by Councilor Voight when he retired. I was probably talking too much at a meeting and said that I would keep it going. A lot of times, we can, we can omit, we can neglect emotional intelligence, mental health, mental sharpness, mental toughness, and so we wanted to tackle that topic today.
I, as a psychologist, will see someone, or even I think about medical professionals when it's at its price and stage, because you've been going and going and going, doing the best that you can on your own without realizing that, wow, my body is breaking down.
Man, had an incredible conversation around health feeling, homelessness. Man, I was really blown away by the panel. A lot of great information, great food. We were able to honor some very key figures in our community. Really more inspired than ever. This was our first time on the east side. We're right here in District One this year for the 15th Annual Man Up Breakfast.
Many of our children realize that you could not imagine on your worst day, and that's literally is in every day. What the city did was recognize that at first, the first line of defense is our school council. So they allocated funding to ensure that every school in the city of Birmingham has a full-time council. That's the first step.
Hey, oftentimes in our community and our society today, man, men are pushed to just constantly go, 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 never taking the time to rest. Well, today, we did that. We paused, we took a break, we took a moment to reflect and think about the things that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. We had the Wellness Lounge, where men, wherever, get massages. We had shoe shine going on. We had a lot of health professionals just being able to connect and give people feedback about what they should be doing in their life to ensure they're as healthy as possible and have a plan for their future. And so really excited, very inspired, man. Was truly an incredible event. 2025 might be my favorite year.
Hi, everyone. We're at the 30th Annual Respect Back to School Rally, respecting every single person ever created. That's what Respect stands for. This is awesome, seeing all the Birmingham City Schools, bands performing, with Alcorn State Band as well. It's an awesome opportunity. We basically run out of school supplies for people and candy, so it's just opportunity left on the community, the D6 community, the Birmingham community. Thank you, more Congress, for always putting on this event, loving on the community, fulfilling their needs. It's even more important, you know, growing up at More than Congress Faith Church, staying, going from like a small rally to this big rally here, and always being able to volunteer with my parents and being supporters. So it's really awesome, just really loving on this community, from one generation to the next, the Smithmans. We love MDC, we love Birmingham, we love giving back to our community. So we're going to have a good summer, right? We're going to have a good school year, right? We're going to make good grades, and we're going to be kind to people, right? Good.